I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on the counter tonight, we have two informational pieces that go with the motion 11136, the solicitor on transit merchants ordinance. And they're just for information, it's not a voting item. So if you add them to that motion for information. And do we have any other changes to the agenda? Not, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Girba? Second law. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and we have no absences. We have citizen comments on agenda items on the meanings act. Any citizen may come forward at this time, may comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who'd like to speak is requested by not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, 600 Canterbury. Unfinished business on the DPW building roof. I am hoping that the council and the city manager will give us a history. I did go and look at the paperwork and it appears that the DPW building was finished in January 2007 and it was substantially completed. I guess that meant the roof was out. The builder, Davenport, and Plant Moran was hired to oversee it. There was an architect. And February, now this was given to us in 2007, in February 2007, one month later, there's a leak. And the leak continues and continues and continues. Now, the contractor bonds remain for three years after a date of substantial completion, which we don't know what substantial completion means. And I would think there was a surety bond. And what they're talking about, you're talking about tonight is possibly looking into attorney to see if we can get the roof replaced. In October 2007, an outside inspector for the city reports that the roof was improperly installed and recommends repair. Now, since 2007, Davenport has came back, has come back and put caulking on the leak, from what I understand in reading. And Davenport signed a five-year work done starting back to 2007. So in two years, they went back. I guess there's a problem when we had all these professionals hired to do a job and it leaked from day one. And this is 2011. We had a leak at the rec center. We had a leak at the old city hall before this was done. I guess to talk about 100, let's see, $265,000 for a new roof, instead of going to ask somebody legally to have the people correct this, be it Plant Moran who overlooked it, be it, I guess we had somebody from the city overlooking this. This is a big mistake and I'm sorry that this comes to the public from 2007 to finally be addressed in 2011.
Is there other citizens coming? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Sorry.
My name's Eric Grossman, a third year employee with the city of Celine and teamster steward. I stand before you to ask council to approve a one-year extension of the teamsters contract. City manager Todd Campbell may advise you that he does not recommend extending the contract because it lacks fairness and fiscal analysis. I believe those are the very reasons why we need to extend this contract. The city of Celine published a strategic plan for 2011 and 12 under the heading Maintain Financial Stability. It lists as part of the city's goals and objectives that with regard to labor negotiations, benefits should be the same for all groups. To that end, all the contracts have recently been aligned. The rationale was twofold, fairness and cost savings. By being a collective group, aligning the contract dates assures that no group of employees will be shorted in healthcare and other benefits compared to the other groups. We have opened our contract twice to your request to modify our healthcare coverage to save on costs. These changes have created additional costs to individual employees, but there was a much larger cost savings achieved when we all made the same changes at the same time. It was a collective change in the healthcare policy that was responsible for the substantial savings. It would be, it would not be wise to create future subgroups in healthcare. Just four council meetings ago, you approved the police union's request for a one-year extension. The reasoning behind the police requesting the extension was the lack of clear information from the governor's administration on the upcoming healthcare reforms. It would be wise to extend their contract for another year, allowing the dust to settle and time to address the more innovative and collaborative approaches in future healthcare. These extensions were adopted with the recommendation of the city manager. Now, we are before you asking to extend our contract for another year, just as you did for the police contracts. It is essential that you give us a response tonight. The quick pace is not to put anyone on the spot, for this is the simplest of requests. By extending our contract for a year, you would be following your strategic plan, keeping the contract dates aligned, and the benefits the same for all unions. Unlike the request from the police, we are not asking for a cost of living increase, which would make it two years in a row of no increase for our unit. We do not have contract issues with the city and have waived when asked by Mr. Campbell other contractual agreements. Out of respect and in the spirit of our past efforts and good working relationships, we wish that you would please discuss this matter. We need to act collectively on our benefits. Thank you.
Are there other citizen comments?
My name's John Heller and some of you probably know I'm running for council. And I'm here to strongly object to you spending $1,800 on a political junket for the mayor and two council members. I think it's a horrible example to set in these hard economic times, especially when you're talking about imposing economic hardship on Eric's unit. And I think Todd's memo, as Eric alluded to, is totally disingenuous. Because if you were really concerned about the city's financial affairs, you wouldn't have extended the contracts for the police officers and the sergeants. And I think, I think you're just punishing the DPW where you have a chance to do that and you didn't treat the police the same. And I also think that it shows the same lack of foresight that you had when you moved to cut the police dispatch. And I also think that you spending $1,800 on a political junket shows your disregard for spending money when you're cutting base, talking about cutting basic city services like police dispatch. And I think it shows the same lack of foresight. You didn't plan when you were starting to talk about cutting police dispatch and then suddenly you had a reversal. It's the same thing with this, with the DPW. You sat on a course, approved the police contract extensions, and now all of a sudden you're not going to approve, or apparently you're not going to approve, if you follow Todd's recommendation, the DPW contract. And on one other matter around the dispatch, I think if you're wondering why people were wondering if you'd already approved it, alls you have to do is look at how you approved the parking enforcement downtown. It was brought up at the very end of a meeting where it wasn't on the agenda. There was no discussion, there was no vote, and yet you're going to spend $15,000 on that. And also, I'd point out to Dean and Brian, there was no data to justify that expense of $15,000. So if you're wondering why people are suspicious about how you make decisions, that's a prime example. It was brought up at the very end of a meeting, there was no discussion, there was no vote, and there was no data. So I think that shows a lack of foresight and I think it shows a lack of foresight with this whole issue of the contracts as well. You've approved two, now you're not going to approve another one. And you're spending $1,800 on what I consider an unnecessary political junket, when you're going to impose hardship on your employees. Thank you.
Is there further citizen comment? Now, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Move Marl, second Girba, to approve the consent agenda as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Under public hearings, item 11133, this is the application for IFT for Klingenberg Orlacan Tech Center Incorporated for $738,825. This would be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 24, 2011 memo from Finance Director Burgoyne regarding recommendation on IFT application for Klingenberg Orlacan Tech Center Incorporated.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Second. Girba, second Tahar. Mr. Burgoyne.
This is a company that leases space at the Liebherr facility on Woodland Drive. And they're expanding. They've been pretty steady, they're expanding slightly. They're adding equipment and they've asked for a tax abatement. In our point system reviewing this, we came up with a period of six years and the special projects commission voted to send that forward as six years to the city council.
Any questions for Mr. Burgoyne?
I have one question.
Sir.
We have what amounts to as a clawback clause within this, we do.
We do have that in the agreement.
Further questions? We have a motion to acknowledge receipt, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We need a motion to open the public hearing affording applicant and taxing units an opportunity to be heard.
So moved.
Who moved that, Mr. Girba?
Yeah.
And we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Marl, to open the public hearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is now open. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this issue?
Move to close?
Second.
Move Girba, second law, to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is now closed. This is a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution approving application of Klingenberg Orlacan Tech Center Incorporated for industrial facilities exemption certificate in the amount of $738,825 for personal property for a period of six years, subject to the terms and provisions of the tax abatement agreement to be entered into by the applicant within the city of Celine. To authorize or not authorize, the mayor clerked to execute said tax abatement agreement as prepared and approved by Attorney Grossman.
Move to approve and adopt and authorize.
Move Rhodes, do we have a second?
Second.
Second law, to approve and authorize. All in favor, oh, discussion, sorry. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I think there's, the applicant is here.
Could you come up and talk about your, thank you for your investment. I hope they don't take away personal property tax, so we'll actually have some revenue from this investment. But if you'd like to talk a little bit about your company, I apologize, my phone's making noise and I got a little sidetracked. So if you wouldn't mind just talking a little bit about the company, where you're located and what you do, that would be really helpful, thank you. Yeah, we're located in the Celine Industrial Park. Like Mr. Burgoyne said, that we are in the Liebherr facility. We're working really closely with Liebherr and all over the world. Liebherr and Klingenberg work really closely together and they're a sigma pool agreement. We have grown pretty steadily over the last few years, Klingenberg has. And we're just a small group, in fact, a group of Klingenberg and Liebherr. We only have 12 employees, but we're now fortunate enough that we can buy another piece of equipment and that we could get to keep our employees and maybe even add another one to it.
Great. Does council have any questions? You've been there for how many years?
Eleven, yeah. Right.
And how many employees do you have?
We have 12.
Yes. Great. Thank you, well, thank you for coming up and I apologize for inviting you up earlier. So that motion to approve and adopt unauthorized carried. And we'll move on to the next item, which is 11134, the application for IFT for McNaughton &amp; Gunn Incorporated for $699,400. This would be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 6, 2011 memo from Finance Director Burgoyne regarding recommendation on IFT application from McNaughton &amp; Gunn Incorporated. We have a motion?
Move to acknowledge.
Move Rhodes?
Second.
Second Girba to acknowledge receipt, Mr. Burgoyne.
This application also went before the special projects commission, which recommended a four-year tax abatement.
Any questions for Mr. Burgoyne? Hey, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there anybody to hear from McNaughton &amp; Gunn?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see you. We have a motion to open the public hearing affording the applicant and taxing units an opportunity to be heard. So moved. Move Tahar, second.
Girba.
Girba? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is open. Would you like to come and talk a little bit about what you're doing? And any other public comments that anybody would like to make, or this is the time? Thank you.
We actually have a few different projects that are included in the abatement proposal. The first one, the plate processor is in support of our offset printing, which is what we founded the company on. We've been in Celine since 1978. The cutter and the trimmer are in support of digital printing, which we're bringing in-house and that's to support what we're seeing in our industry, which is quantities coming down. So it allows us to print more economical quantities, down to 25 copies. Whereas before with our equipment, probably 500 was our minimum. So it allows us to expand our market. It's part of about a $400,000 investment that we've made in the digital print area. And then the third project is one of two projects that we've done to reduce our energy costs in the plant.
Thank you. Is any, are there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Rhodes?
I had a question and perhaps I should have addressed this to Mr. Burgoyne earlier, but I noticed that this primary piece of equipment is a leased item.
Yes.
I'm just curious about the terms of that lease. Is it at least as long as the abatement is for and is it?
It's a five-year lease.
Okay, so we don't have a problem doing tax abatements on leased equipment, I take it?
No, the lease terms have to provide that the firm is responsible for property tax.
Which we are.
All right, thank you.
Is there other questions for the applicant? Thank you for coming up. Is there any other public comment to this motion?
Hi, I'm Larry Osterling with the Celineary Chamber of Commerce. Just real shortly, I don't think, I think we should also take knowledge of the fact that McNaughton &amp; Gunn is, when you look up outstanding Celine business in the dictionary, it's probably called McNaughton &amp; Gunn. Been outstanding community footprint, we're very proud to have him as part of our business community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Move Marl, second Girba, close the hearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Public hearing is now closed. We have a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution approving application of McNaughton &amp; Gunn Incorporated for industrial facilities exemption certificate in the amount of $699,400 for personal property for a period of four years, subject to the terms and provisions of the tax abatement agreement to be entered into by the applicant with the city of Celine. To authorize or not authorize, the mayor clerked to execute said tax abatement agreement as prepared and approved by Attorney Grossman. Move to approve and adopt and to authorize. Move Tahar, do we have a second? To approve and adopt and authorize?
I'll second.
Second Marl, discussion? I just would also reiterate what Mr. Osterling said, that McNaughton &amp; Gunn has been a very upstanding and outstanding community business member and really involved and we appreciate your continued investment. And I know that you're constantly having to reinvent your business because it's quite challenging with all the technology that's coming out affecting printing and publishing. So thank you for your continued investment and contributions to our community. If there's any further discussion?
Just to add to what Gretchen said, I agree, good neighbors and a good outfit and a little bit of dealings I've had with McNaughton &amp; Gunn have been outstanding, so appreciate you.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11109, the South Middle Public Act VII Agreement. This would be a motion to open that public hearing for the South Middle Agreement for selection process to appoint representation to the countywide transit board.
So moved.
Second. Rhodes, second Tahar. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is now open. Is there anybody that would like to speak to the motion to open, to appoint the representation to the countywide transit board?
Mayor Rocklaw, I do think it's a good idea that you guys do have the ATA system come in to here. I work with the one in Indian Arbor along with about four other ones around the county here. So it would be great if you guys do have to come in this area and just to point a lot of people on it in the city of Celine.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment about the selection process?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Move Marl, second Girba, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is now closed. This would be a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution to approve South Middle Public Act VII Agreement for countywide transit board selection as submitted and to authorize or not authorize the mayor to execute the South Middle Agreement, joining with the city of Mylan, Lodi Township, Celine Township, and York Township to select our countywide transit board representative. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve and adopt and authorize.
Move Rhodes, do we have a second?
Second.
Second Tahar. Discussion.
Mayor.
Mr. Girba.
Just curious, where do we stand with all the other government bodies that are involved in this agreement as to their passage of this? Are we one of the first ones, second one?
We're sort of, are you talking about in our region or countywide?
Within this, just within this.
Our region. I believe York is doing it tonight also, right? Aren't they meeting tonight? Do you remember? And Celine is meeting next week in Lodi, I'm not sure, I talked to Jan, but I'm not sure when. It should be, I actually was trying to send an email late last night and it, sorry, it was like the last drug.
No, I mean, really my question was, is this an all or nothing approach? Because I was curious to see where all the other areas are, because I think every one of us has to pass this, otherwise it's.
It's only people that want to have a representation on a board for governance and then there'll be an opportunity. So I think their, Celine Township, I'm not sure if they're going to actually have somebody on the selection committee. The first meeting, there was an update, the ATA sent newsletter. I don't know if you got it, I was trying to forward it to council last night. But I will try tonight again. But they said that they had the list of everybody in our area, the dates that things were approved. And I don't remember Mylan, but I have personally spoken with the supervisors from Celine and Lodi Township and I haven't, I understand York is on the agenda from talking to ATA for, I believe tonight is on their agenda. So Celine Township, Mr. Marion didn't know what they were going to do, whether or not it was going to be voted or not, and neither did Jan. But that doesn't mean that there's going to be a representative from whoever decides to be part of the governance process. So if it's just the city of Celine, then we would be the only person that would be having a selection committee member.
Okay.
And then the other thing would be they're trying to have this select, the board representatives formed by, they want to have a meeting the week of October 20th. So the timeline is that all the entities that are within our region need to have whoever they want to appoint to the selection process in place and have their appointed representative by that October 20th meeting.
Right, okay.
Is that?
That answered, I was more concerned trying to figure out what happens with this if the other entities don't approve it. And so if we approve it, it goes forward.
Right, then we would be the only, we would be the only one putting the selection committee together.
I just want to clarify that.
Mr. Campbell, did you want to add anything?
No, I just very simply, as far as the process goes, we would be able to at a future date, after this board is formed and they do the bylaws and they determine all, how things will work. If at such time then, the city wanted to opt out for whatever reasons that they could, I certainly would recommend that we participate to help design and put the bylaws together and that type of thing and then, at a minimum.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we can move forward with this without the other issues.
Right.
Mr. Tahar.
Yes, thank you. And the selection committee, once it's formed, develops its own selection procedures?
There are some guidelines that ATA can provide, but we have, actually maybe it's not in here. I'll try to send that. I don't know if you sent that out. There is some guidelines that they, that ATA had presented in the meeting that we, we had a meeting with representatives from each of the local units of government within our Act VII Agreement area, South Middle. So there are some guidelines. It talks about the terms, they're doing stagger terms, how long the terms are, how many meetings there's going to be a committee. Actually, I apologize, because I met with Jim last week and hopefully you got that from just being sort of the update of where everything was and maybe I need to get that out to everybody, because for some reason I was thinking we had gotten that to everybody since the meeting we had.
And also as far as voting wise, the South Middle representatives determined that each jurisdiction, so the five jurisdictions would each have an equal vote to determine who that representative would be. In case of a tie, then it's weighted based on population for each of the jurisdictions.
Mr. Rhodes?
Just wanted to be sure that the citizens understand that the passage of this resolution does not commit any type of tax monies to be expended at this point in time. It's simply the authorization to select a person to represent us in the furthering of the process, wherever it happens to end up.
Can you see a further discussion on this motion? Okay, we have a motion to approve and adopt and authorize. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we have a motion to appoint Jack Seo to serve on the selection committee to choose the South Middle representative to the countywide transit board.
So moved.
Second.
Move Marl, second Tahar. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under unfinished business, item 05145, the DPW building roof. So we need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 8, 2011 memo from city manager Campbell and the August 29, 2011 letter from attorney Grossman.
Move to acknowledge.
Second.
Move Rhodes, second law, to acknowledge receipt. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we have discussed before, as far as the roof and we've been working with city attorney Grossman as well as attorney David Lick out of, from Foster Swift, specialized attorney to help us determine by reviewing the situation and been working with them for quite a while to help determine what are our next steps and what, what's the possibility of, if need be, legal action. We've done, we have had a couple of analysis by the same company, RTA. They did the one back in '07 and then we had them do one, I think it was last year, if I remember correctly, to see how it had progressed as far as, because they have, Davenport Brothers, the general contractor, does have, continue to honor their 20-year warranty and come out and fix the leaks when we have them. So the other item too is we, to date, we've not, as my memo states, we haven't experienced any major equipment damage and we hope not to. But obviously, we've had some stained ceiling tiles and some, some paint where it's. ceiling tiles and some, some paint where it's come down the wall, that type of thing. So we are working towards that. As my memo states, based on the reviews, the individual reviews from RTA, as well as working with Mr. Lick, we have spent in the area of $30,000. And as those were individual components, and actually the one, the first, 2007 was prior to my arrival here, but the other ones were, were within my spending limit. But, but, most of you recall, through the discussions we've had, when we had Mr. Lick come in and discuss what he'd review the analysis, and basically the bottom line was there was certainly not clear cut, lack of technical term, make slam dunk, nothing was for sure. So the question, one of the questions is, if we do have, if we do take legal action, what is the possibility of getting a judgment? And then if we do get a judgment, then how much do we get awarded? How much do we get awarded? Will we be able to collect? So then, the, the last direction staff had received was to request meeting notes and that type of thing from CDPA and the architectural firm for the project, as well as Plant Moran Cressa, who is the project manager for the city on the project. So we've received those, which is this. And so now, as we discussed, that, you know, we would recommend, again, using a professional that knows what they're looking for to review them, and we would recommend if the council wanted to go that direction, that we would continue on with Mr. Lick to do that, because he, he knows the background, he's, he's done the reviews thus far. However, certainly he does tremendous job, very detailed, very thorough, but he's also very costly, and talking with Mr. Grossman, we both agree that it would minimally be somewhere probably between $5,000 and $10,000 additionally to have him go through these records, as he does very thoroughly. So, so then the question is, where, where do we go from here? Do we take that avenue? Do we potentially seek remedy through the courts? I don't know the answer to those, but I do know that, given our current financial status, because it is not a slam dunk, I would be concerned to have to continue to spend additional monies without a, I guess, for lack of a better term, a positive return on investment. So, happy to answer any questions.
Would you say Davenport is the big responsible, responsive to your calls for help?
They have, yes sir.
Do you think that they are getting a handle on leak situation that became the most frequent, or?
Well, the best, the best person is Jeff Fordice, our DPW director, but, I mean, there's the last, I think the last time, they took a couple days to respond, but overall, from the beginning, overall, they typically respond fairly quickly, but I'll leave it to Jeff.
Yeah, generally, they've been out either the next day or a day after we contact them. I'm not sure what the issue was the last time, it did take about a week. And they had kind of gotten ahead of the leaks. We had a period of almost a year without any leaks, and then it seems to have picked up again. And as they become more familiar with the roof and what its issues are, they seem to get better and better at tracking them down and repairing them quickly. So, I don't know if that means they'll ever get to a point where we'll go five years without a leak, but they have been responsive.
Mr. Law.
Follow up on that, if I could, Mr. Fordice, with the recent rain that we've had, a lot of it, did we have any problems?
During the, the very heavy rains at the end of July, we had a few small leaks. It doesn't really seem to have any correlation with the size of the storm.
Nothing last week with those other monster storms?
No, nothing last week.
Okay. If I could continue. Another question, maybe to Mr. Campbell or Mr. Grossman, the issue was brought up about the, in Mr. Grossman's memo about substantially completed. What exactly does that mean? I had the same kind of question. Substantially completed, is that 80% completed, 90% completed? Because January of 2007 opened in February, right? So.
Mr. Grossman.
I believe that's an engineering term.
There, I'm sure there's a legal definition behind it, but in general, it means that whatever the project is, it's usable. There may be some items, you know, there may be a piece of carpet that needs to be replaced, or ceiling tile or something, but in this case, a building, it's, it's ready to be moved into and used for its intended purpose.
That's what I sort of thought, okay. That's all I have right now, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Girbaugh.
Not questions, but I am to make statements from this. Since I came on board on this, basically back in December after I was elected, my understanding from this is that this has occurred, I mean, it's been four years. Looking at the information from a consultant report that was provided in, I believe it was October of 2007, shortly after the building was substantially completed, indicated that the roof was completely installed incorrectly. It was not done right, it wasn't installed correctly, and there were problems with it. In addition to that, of course, yesterday they came out and wanted to repair it and everything, but of course they didn't want to put a new roof on, because of course that was going to cost them money. There were even concerns about how the materials and application of the roof was put on, whether it was done correctly, whether they hired the right people and individuals to do this. I'm correct on that. Further, as this continued, I mean, there was a transition in staff, so I'm new to this, but I'm trying to get an understanding of this. The timeline that has passed on this is extremely long. I don't understand why legal ramifications were taken earlier, but I understand there were issues and concerns of looking how to deal with this in a, basically a handshake mode, but apparently the contractor, contractor, Davenport Brothers was not going to go that route, and they're known for doing that. When I understood and got this, after this, Dave Lick has done review and incurred significant dollars by the city for his review, there were issues that were brought up that he did not deal with. He should have dealt with immediately, in terms of Plant Moran failed to do some of their inspections, and that's why we have this, all this information now. There are a lot of basic things that could have been done initially in the first year or so of this issue that were not done. There's a number of parties in here that basically either didn't do their work, did it, or failed to do inspections, didn't validate information, or such. So there's a number of items on here that, not calling this to our staff, but I'm holding up responsibility of the Davenport Brothers, of Plant Moran, and any other individuals on this. From my concern on this, we bought, built a brand-new building, the reason why we built this building was because the former building had a roof that leaked like anything. When I was on council 10 years ago, we were fighting to replace it, it was due to the hazards and things that related to it because of the leaking roof. This roof, yeah, maybe we can patch some of the leaks, but these leaks are coming through, we have potential of mold, other issues that are underneath the roof that we don't have it inspected, and haven't even cut into the roof to see what that could potentially lead to. I can raise all other kinds of concerns about this, but from my perspective, this contractor failed the City of Celine, and if it means we have to go to court and prove this, and I'm not willing to not go forward on this, because this company is going to do this continually, and we need to say stop to this, but we also need to get a roof that we can be confident in and not have to continue patching, and not have an environment that potentially could become a hazard for our employees.
Is there further discussion? Mr. Campbell, do you have any comments? Okay, so we have a motion to acknowledge receipt. The motion, there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. We have a motion to continue to utilize a 20-year warranty and have Davenport Brothers repair the leaks as they occur, or retain Attorney David Lick to review the documentation and determine whether or not to proceed with any legal action.
Move to retain Attorney David Lick to review documentation to determine whether or not to proceed with any legal action.
Do we have support?
No support.
Discussion. Mr. Law.
Well, I'll echo most of what Mr. Girbaugh has already raised, and it is a concern, it's a concern for me, I'm sure it's a concern for many of the residents of Celine, that we expected a, really a state-of-an-art, a state-of-art facility, and it's anything but, unfortunately. I'm certainly not a proponent of spending taxpayers' money for, well, just willy-nilly, but I think in this case, it's very important that we cover all our bases, look at all our avenues legally, to decide whether or not we should pursue with this any further. And until we look at all the documentation and look at what else may be out there, then I really wouldn't feel comfortable in just proceeding with the, if you will, cut-and-patch-up kind of thing from Davenport Brothers over the course of the, of their warranty.
Further discussion? Mr. Rhodes.
Kind of following along those same lines, I would just say that it's, I understand it's not a good time to be spending more of our, more of our revenue, but if I understood the documentation correctly, we're looking at something less than 5% of the potential cost of having to replace that roof if that happens, and I think that, that's a, that's an expenditure that I'm willing to make at this point.
Mr. Law.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just add, and I would echo the comments made by my colleagues, Mr. Law and Mr. Rhodes, as well as Mr. Girbaugh, that although I have some financial concerns about proceeding, I do believe that essentially the city was cheated and lied to, and we deserve nothing less than the best when we hire a contractor or an outfit to, to provide the city a service, and therefore I think it's appropriate to proceed. I have some hesitation, and I'm remiss, I guess to an extent, that we're talking about this tonight, because the situation would be sort of laughable if it wasn't so tragic. But the fact of the matter is, just a few short years ago, we had somebody build us a new DPW facility, install a roof, and it almost immediately started leaking. And so I think it's prudent at, at this point to proceed with keeping Mr. Lick on retainer, to see if proceeding to, to formal legal action would be appropriate. So, again, I will support this, this motion.
Further discussion, Mr. Har.
Yeah, I, I will also reluctantly support this further expenditure, given Mr. Grossman's and Mr. Campbell's confidence in Mr. Lick's ability to sift through the information and give us a more definitive answer.
Is there further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor to retain Attorney David Lick, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
No.
Under new business, item 11-135, the annual liability and property insurance pool renewal, this is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 19, 2011 memo from City Manager Campbell, to approve or not approve the annual renewal premium with Michigan Municipal League Liability and Property Pool at Meadowbrook for the period of September 1, 2011 through August 31, 2012, in the amount not to exceed $130,853.
Move to approve, second.
Move Rhodes, second Moral, to approve, discussion. Mr. Campbell, I believe we have somebody here from Meadowbrook?
We do, thank you, Madam Mayor. Judy Thompson Trojan is here from Meadowbrook, from MML Liability and Property Pool, and she's going to give you a summary, but just very quickly, from staff's perspective, we've been very pleased with Meadowbrook and our representation. Last year, I believe, instead of a dividend, they crossed the board and they froze rates. This year, our rates went up $21, and they're going to, if, upon renewal, and Judy will mention this, but we will, we would be getting a dividend check of a little over $21,000. So, but again, been very pleased with every, all the interactions we've had, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Briefly, I, I wanted to thank you, the City of Celine, for being members of the MML Liability and Property Pool since September 1st of 2003. As a member for five years or more, you are eligible for 100% of the dividend that was declared by the MML Pool Board on March 1st of, of this year. And as Mr. Campbell said, it is in the amount of $21,038. And so, it's for members that renew this year, they get to share in that dividend, and your post-renewal dividend will come out right as soon as, in the month following your payment of your premium. And just to let you know, this is not a one-time deal, the board met last week, and they are going to declare another dividend for members that renew in 2012.
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you, good to see you again.
Thank you.
Thanks for not keeping the rates stable, we appreciate that. We work hard here to be a safe city, and I know you've helped us with that too, so thank you. We have a motion on the floor, no further discussion, all in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Item 11-136, so ordinance number 735, solicitors and transient merchants, this is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 29, 2011 memo from City Clerk Kill to acknowledge receipt and first reading ordinance number 735, in order to repeal Article II, peddlers, solicitors, and transient traders of Chapter 22, businesses of the Celine City Code, and replace it with the following revised Article II. You all have in front of you, also, we had two handouts that was requested by a council member, that was what our possible fee structure might be, because it's referred to in the ordinance, that there will be a fee. So, we need to have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the three pieces of paper.
So move, second.
Move Law, second Moral. Discussion. Mr. Peters.
Mr. Rupel, thank you very much for your work on this solicitation document, and just one question, between the new and the old, I know the new one has updated for each, but what's the big difference between the two? Is there a showstopper difference between the two? Is there one big difference?
Who would be the best person to, could come to the microphone and speak to that? I think that's a good question, how, how did it change?
Hi, I'm Alan Lupai, Detective with the Police Department. Myself and Diane Hill and Jackie Lindemore reviewed multiple, multiple ordinances from other jurisdictions, and we saw many problems. To go into detail with all of them would be hard, I guess a way to describe it to you is, we found the first ordinance that we liked out of probably 15 of them we liked, and we started saying, you know, what about the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, delivering cookies to houses, what about the Ice Cream Man? We did all these what-ifs, and we continued to find conflicts in the ordinance that we had to dive into and change. So, from the original ordinance that we liked, we've completely redone that one, and we're, we just have a mixture of 10 different cities that we, that we liked. One of the biggest things that I realized today when re-reviewing it, is we didn't even have hours in our old ordinance. There was no time limits on when someone could solicit. So, we've come up with a preliminary time schedule at this point, that's up for discussion, about 10:00 to, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. That's, that's one of the big things. But the other things were just to be consistent with allowing Boy Scouts to sell cookies, or Girl Scouts to sell cookies, and allowing the different nonprofit groups to do canned food drives, school events, you know, all different things like that.
Just a general revision.
Yeah.
So, enough? Okay, Mr. Moral.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to first thank Mr. Rupel and Ms. Lindemore, and Mr. Lupai and City Clerk Kill for working on the, the ad hoc committee that essentially revised the entire solicitor's ordinance. You guys did a nice, nice bit of work here, and I congratulate you for that. I have two comments that are really, I guess, more of suggestions. The first one is on page two of the document, and I'm looking at item four, which The first one is on page two of the document, and I'm looking at Item 4, which reads, "Persons who are, who are attempting not to speak with residents and who are engaged in the distribution of signed or unsigned handbills, political or otherwise, would be exempt from the rules."
I think, if I can comment, I think the word "not" is not supposed to be in there.
Okay.
I think if you remove that, then those persons then become exempt.
Okay. And that, that would be my recommendation then, Clerk Kill, because I think of political candidates and surrogates on their behalf. It's an important part of the process to be able to engage with our residents. I'm not bold enough to suggest tonight that I haven't done that, so some may accuse me of doing something that benefits me personally, but, but again, I think that's an important part of our process, the process, and generally speaking, I think the citizens enjoy the opportunity to engage and ask questions and raise concerns with their elected officials. So if we subtract the word "not" from Section 4, I would be very satisfied. And then the other question or suggestion that I raised this evening is on page 5, Section 22-35, Hours of Operation. It's certainly better than the old, but my prerogative would be to make it eight hours and not nine. And so I would recommend or suggest that we change the 7:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And make it an eight-hour period of solicitation, not a nine-hour. And I think that's more, more than sufficient for, for vendors or people who are soliciting. So those are my two comments and suggestions, Mayor.
Just, I would guess I would like to hear from the people that spent all this time working on it, what your, how you, what your thoughts are on how you set the hours and your opinion on changing it.
I just had.
And also, I, my apologies, because our clerk pointed out at the beginning of the meeting that there were a couple of minor typos.
Right.
And I forgot to, I, I forgot to mention that, so if you want to.
Okay. There's a couple changes. Page 4, Section 22-33, it should read license revocation, not evocation. On page 5, under Number 4, harassment or creation of nuisance, the last line, it should read tend to create a nuisance, period, remove loud noise or notice. That should come out. And I guess I just want to say that we had been working on this ordinance for months. As Don said, that we leaned 10 different ordinances from various communities, totally tore them apart, compared them with ours, come up with this, and this is probably the 20th draft that we've had. It has gone to staff. We've had valuable input from Gary and from Todd, Paul, we've, and Lee, we've taken those comments and, and put those in here, so staff has gone through this numerous times. Our existing ordinance is dated in 1962. It desperately needed an overhaul. The major thing that we did was establish hours, which, those are subject to whatever council would like. We also outlined who is exempt and expounded on that, your youth groups, and those weren't clarified before. We had a tedious process where they had to come in, and they had to give us a list of everyone, and it become who was exempt and who wasn't, and how we managed it here. That became problematic. Who had to have a background check and who didn't, and we have been working on addressing those. We have come up with a new application, which is still in draft mode. We've changed it again today, which Jackie didn't know, but Don and I have been working on that again today. We thought we had it where we wanted it, and nope, it needs some changes. But we wanted to bring the ordinance forward and see if council liked what they saw, get your recommended changes, fine-tune it, and then we'll bring it back probably in October and see where we are at that point.
Mr. Har. Is that, or do you have other?
I was just going to say, as far as the fees that you had before you tonight, you have what other communities charge, what we currently charge, what we are proposing to charge, and you'll see that our fees are very different than what we have currently. We evaluated what we had been charging, and it doesn't even begin to cover staff cost as far as what the police department does with a background checked, what we have to do with just mere paperwork and contacts that we make. We did look at the other communities and tried to come in somewhere where they were, but all of those are, of course, up to council, and those will come back to you when the final draft comes back. But if you do have any suggestions or need more information on that, we're happy to work at that. So with that, we'll take more questions.
Mr. Har.
Yeah, first, thank you. First, I want to say thank you to everyone who worked on this document. It's, it seems to me to be very clear and well-laid out and easy to understand, and I have small appreciation for the amount of effort that, but I'm sure I haven't, really don't have a clue about how much time and energy this took. I have one, a question on, or comment on page 2, under the, in the list of items, persons exempt, in number 8. Is that meant to include, for downtown events sponsored by these or other organizations, is this intended to include merchants or groups that might be engaged in selling things in, during those events?
Yes. Do you have any suggestions for different wording or to make it more clear?
Maybe I'd just add something about vendors participating in the events under the umbrellas of these organizations or something like that. I'm not sure.
Okay.
If I think of something, I'll send you.
Okay.
Yes, that's it, thank you.
Mr. Law?
Missy, do you know how many solicitors or vendors now have licenses in the city, roughly?
Currently, right now, today?
Yeah.
Zero. Profit organizations, we've had one this summer, which was the Ice Cream Man. We get nonprofits, we get a lot of those. We get Fund for Public Information Research, we get Americans Up Today. We've never really required your youth groups to come in and get, get a permit, they're exempt. We have had in the past shy enterprises, I believe they were doing some type of vacuum equipment. We've had book salesmen, magazine salespeople, those type that have wanted to come in.
Okay. All right, I'll reserve my comments for the main motion later, but would you say the proposed fee would be a fair one, given that, and I appreciate you sending me the, the comparables here? It looks like it would be a pretty fair fee. I don't know if Jackie or Don would like to respond.
Do I think that they're fair?
Yeah, you think it's a proposed $75 is fair?
With the amount of work that we have to do, Don, you might want to expound on what you have to do.
Yeah, there's, we kind of talked about this. We looked at the other fees that the other entities are charging, and from the start to the end, there's probably several hours of work between the city's side and the police side from start to finish, maybe a couple hours, and just a fair breakdown, even if you looked at just, just straight wages, that, that would be the fee right there.
It's fine, thank you.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yeah, I have a, actually, a quantity of comments, suggestions, questions, which I would have normally brought forward earlier, but the government seemed to say, wait till this meeting, so rather than go through all of these things with everybody here, since it sounds like it's going to get reworked a little bit anyway, I guess I'd like to request an opportunity to have an audience with whomever it is that we need to, and I'll go over my questions, comments independently of this audience. Is that all right?
Well, I mean, we were having.
People might want to know what they are.
Yeah, we're having a public hearing, and we're going to be putting it forward, and if there, are they significant changes, or? Because we're trying to make a proposed ordinance as a body, so I think it would be helpful if we, if you maybe elaborated a little bit.
Okay, well, the first one on page 1, Item 3, where it talks about a solicitor and how that person travels. The word motor is still in there for truck. I mean, that's, I think it's just a carryover from before, because I don't know how else you move your truck around except with a motor, and none of those other things have motor on them. Item number 4, I thought perhaps it wasn't even necessary at all, since solicitor is defined in Item 3 above, so I'm just going to run through these things without expecting answers to them right now. Item 7, second line, person who is not assessed for taxes, I, I'm not sure what those taxes are, is that sales income, property, real, personal taxes? A little further along in that same line, a person who leases, someone who leases a building or a property oftentimes is paying property taxes as part of their lease payment, so I don't know how that fits. The next line in that same paragraph, where it talks about a temporary period, what's the definition of temporary? Does that need to be defined to keep this from being challenged at some point in the future? Page 2, Item 2, it says, "Any person associated with any public or private school," that seems really very broad, so someone from out of state who says they're raising funds for a private school could come in and do a solicitation, seems inappropriate. Maybe that needs to get pinned down a little bit more there, and just saying any, I had made the note about the teen center, but I, maybe that comes under one of these youth groups, I'm not sure. For, that change is already made. Item 8, Saline Area Historic Society, I noticed, is not listed there, and I, I wonder if perhaps that could be or should be, given the other types of organizations that are listed there. And then, when we use the term in the downtown area, again, to not have to worry about a challenge later, it would be nice if we defined the downtown area, maybe by referring to some other document that actually puts parameters around that space.
They don't even really need in the downtown area.
Yeah, and then, Section 22-28, third line, "Application for a nonprofit organization needs to be filed with the city clerk's office and approved," should be added there, I think, prior to solicitation. It's more than just filing the application. I would, I would believe. And then, the question that I had, it says licenses shall expire on the date specified, and I don't know how long licenses are given. Is that based on the applicant?
Right.
They ask for a particular time period?
Right.
Okay. And then I had a note to myself, again, what does the application and the license look like? And you said that's still under review.
It is.
So we'll find that out. Okay, that was it. It's just stuff, you know, it might help make it a little better.
It's all good stuff.
Mr. Law?
Can I speak to the motion or just?
Sure.
Okay. Well, I think it is high time that this was done. As City Clerk pointed out, the, oh, proposed, the one that's now on the docket is almost 50 years old, and so it's time for, you know, for changes. And I cite mainly the ones that, the hours of operation now. We may not have a plethora of solicitors and merchants applying for applications, so it's not going to be a financial windfall for the city necessarily, but we certainly, I think, as Mr. Rhodes pointed out with some of the suggestions and changes, we need to tighten it up, we need to clean it up and make it more succinct and more clear. And the hours of operation is one, if not the major area that I was concerned with when I first raised this, because as other people have told me, and, and I've experienced this myself in the city since living here, that I've had people come up to the door well past dark, late as 8, 9 o'clock at night, and I think that's totally unacceptable. I like Mr. Moral's suggestion about cutting off one hour, so 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. It doesn't really conflict much with the dinner hour, which, that's 5 to 6, isn't it? Okay, well, okay, if you have dinner at 6:00 then, you don't have to worry about after, if you have it after 6:00, you know what I mean? So. Yeah, I mean, later eater, anyway. So I think it's, it's a good all-around proposal, and I, again, I appreciate staff, all that have taken part in, in drawing it up, so thank you.
If I can answer Mr. Moral's question about the hours, and I'll touch on that, too, Mr. Law. We did get the hours of all the other communities, or a lot of the other communities, and you got that.
Yes, I appreciate it, thank you.
A lot of those said 9 o'clock.
Yes.
So, and, and we did, we appreciate what you said, we don't like our doors knocking either. I, I actually did a survey with all the police officers and the entire police side, and the complaints that they get when they go on the calls, and the times that a lot of the, of our police, and our residents also, the city, and asked them what times they felt was appropriate. So putting that in, into consideration, that most communities had 9 o'clock, which is definitely too late, in my opinion, that's where we came up with the 7, and I'm, I'm not disagreeing with the 6 either, but that's why we came up, went up a little bit to the 7, just to, in comparison to the other communities.
Sure. I appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Girbog?
I just was going to tag on a couple items. Yeah, this came out really well. I think it did reduce a lot of administrative nightmare that was going on, and put a lot of responsibility that used to be under this chief of police into, I think, the appropriate hands where it belongs. I do like the idea of maybe reducing the hour to 6 o'clock even. I think part of the concern that people had was individuals knocking on their doors after dark, so this would cover during the period of winter, and, I mean, summer's not such an issue, but at this period of time, it's starting to get dark later and such. The only couple of things I wanted to comment on, Mr. Rhodes had mentioned that license expiration. What's the length, is it minimum, maximum length of one year, or?
I don't know. They apply for a specific time, a day, a week, a month.
Okay. So this removes, I was looking at the old ordinance, which said December 31st, all license expire, or one-year period.
Right.
So it's a specific time period. Okay. That was one clarification. And the other one was tracking violations and communicating between you all. How is that going to be handled? Is it something that you maintain, if there are any, or?
That was one of the issues, that, one of the complaints I had, were the people that, that everybody wear an ID tag with a picture, which is given by the city, and I don't know if that necessarily answers your question of tracking, but.
That's one of the things, but, go ahead.
Yes, but that's another issue of accountability. Tracking as far as enforcement?
Yeah, I mean, if there is a violation or such, and communicating it to the clerk, I mean, I'm not sure if it's, because part of the thing was saying that you would have, couldn't renew one after a year and such, if you had a violation, and some of those suspensions and such. How is that information, once you have it all issued a ticket or something, or caught someone, how do you get that information over to the county clerk? I'm just.
We, we work hand in hand, we work hand in hand pretty much daily, so.
Okay.
It's, yeah, we communicate all the time.
That was just something that was more highlighted in the old ordinance and.
And I believe under revocation, doesn't it speak to that exactly?
I mean, not of ruddic clarity, clearly, on that one.
I think it's just a matter of training or informing the officers that when they have these, that we just need a copy of the complaint.
Okay.
So that we can attach them to, you know, the applications that we have on file, so that we'll know that complaints have been generated.
Okay. I was just curious how that was.
Right now, we don't get copies of those, but we haven't really specifically requested them either. So I think that's just a matter of requesting that to come out of the police department.
Yeah, that was just one of the administrative things I was.
Generally, the, the people that obtain the license and do it the legal way aren't the ones violating the ordinance in general, so it doesn't really.
Right, I'm just making sure that everybody has the information, so that people are aware on both sides when that stuff occurs.
Sure, yep.
And also, on the back of our administrative application, the police department will fill out the backside, and we'll keep copies of that also, so, you know, we can pull it and make comment if there's any issue or any reports given to us.
Right, and I thought that was probably one of the pieces I was missing, so that makes sense, thanks.
Mr. Rhodes?
I'd like to speak to retaining the recommended 7:00 p.m. cutoff time for primarily two reasons. The first is that many households are not occupied at all until someone comes home from work in the evening, and we have a very number of folks anymore who aren't fortunate enough to have full-time, daily employment, and are trying to scratch around and figure out how to keep body and soul together, and I think that we.
And I think that we, they deserve an opportunity to have at least two hours of catching somebody at home to try to further their business. So I, I think the 7:00 PM is reasonable.
Okay, I think that sounds like we're going to need direction from council, so we got to get a consensus on a time before this goes, comes back on the agenda. Mr. Peters?
Would it be beneficial to have a summer and winter time, since the days are so much longer in summer?
We discussed that, actually, as far as the dusk and it may get confusing to have two different times, two different times of the year, and then even the officers on the road to remember, you know, what, when they get called to a call, well, what, when's that date change, when's that time change? So we did discuss that, and it could be done.
I agree with Councilman Rhodes, is my house is empty at 6:00. Nobody there.
Nobody else has separate times, if that matters.
Okay.
Mr. Law? I'm not bound by the 6:00. I mean, I understand what Mr. Rhodes has said, and I thought of that too before I raised this or agreed with Mr. Morrow on the six, but it's only, I tried to balance, you know, the people, when people are having dinner and don't want to be bothered with the fact that, I agree with Mr. Rhodes, that yes, you know, you need to give people who are going door to door a chance to have someone at home at that time, because they're usually not home during 3:00 or whatever, so I'm flexible in the time. I'm not, as long as it's not pitch blackout and they're going door to door or anything like that, that's my main concern.
The winner would be even at 6:00. So, I, we do need to get a vote on the time, so Mr. Morrow will take a few more comments on the hours.
Yeah, just to clarify, obviously, if, if the language that is currently in the proposed ordinance remains indicating that we shall limit solicitation from 10:00 to 7:00, that's not going to prevent me from voting in favor of this. I do feel strongly, I guess to an extent, that six would be preferable. And to the argument that has been made, and it's certainly valid, don't get me wrong, that oftentimes, if you're soliciting between the 10:00 and 6:00 hour, you wouldn't find many people home because most people work in that time period, and that's certainly correct. But I think that's why we make accommodations for that point in this ordinance by providing solicitors the opportunity to solicit on Saturdays when generally more people are home because most people work Monday through Friday. So again, it's not, not the biggest issue, but I am partial to a 6:00 PM ending time.
Any further? Okay, so raise your hand if you want to have it at 6:00 PM. Raise your hand if you want to have it at 7:00 PM. Okay, so we'll keep it at 7:00 PM. Are there any, I think the other items were relatively minor. Any comments anybody made that council has any concerns about, of any of the changes or questions that were brought up? If not, I appreciate the hard worker staff and we will bring this back, I assume, probably in October. So no further discussion?
Oh, may I, actually, one question. You had brought it up about identification. Are we going to require the vendors to wear identification?
Yes.
Okay.
It must be displayed.
It says license must be displayed, but it doesn't say ID or picture?
I think it says that-
Did I miss, okay. I could look at it, so I might have missed it.
I have, I have a-
Please. Oh, sorry, I see it on the east side.
Okay, no further discussion on this motion? Thank you. All in favor, to acknowledge receipt. And first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11-137, 2012 Woodland Drive, Category F Project Engineering Services Contract. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 2nd, 2011 memo from City Superintendent Rubel and Public Works Director Fordice.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Mr. Morrow, we have a second.
Second.
Second, Terhar, to acknowledge receipt. Possibly there is going to be some questions, so if you, one of you would like to come up and then, does any council members have any questions regarding this award? Or maybe not? Any questions? So it be the time, not during the motion?
Mr. Rhodes has.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yeah, so I was waiting for Mr. Rubel to come up, but I was looking at the construction fees not to exceed, and I noticed that Midwestern is a fair amount under, but the evaluation scores didn't place them up at the top, so I'm just curious about how that came to be.
Excellent question.
Oh, good. Glad I had that.
The evaluation process, of course, involves experience, experience with projects, not only in Celine, but in the county and the state, because this is a state required provision here. It's a state-funded project for $375,000. And then it's also the selection points are based on their professional capabilities, their work plan, which is the comprehensive body of the project, and then the fee proposal. Each of those are worth 25 points. Okay, so we actually, in step one, there's this three-step process that we had developed. Step one is looking at, at the fee proposal in depth, and we look at all the factors involved, that not just the raw figure they put down, because that's just the starting point. You look at how many hours they provide us with their work hours in their work plan, and they provide us with the salaries of those people they're going to use. So when you go through and you analyze it in detail and then make comparisons on what the likely outcomes are, you would see, what shows in the detailed report is that the Midwestern work plan only carried 217 project hours, and the Wilcox proposal carried 307 work hours, which was right near the median of all of the firm's estimate of what work goes into the project, and then they base their fee on what work would go into the project at staffing and so forth. So if you underestimate the time that goes into it, then you have to cut corners or come back for extra fees. And that was the case earlier this year. We had three MCI projects that required extra fees. So in reality, we tried to go to the firm that has the best proposal for actually carrying out the project within the realm of the actual works, scope of work and the time dedicated to the project and not deal with extra cost at the end. See, because when, MCI's evaluation on the number of man-hours into the project divided by the cost comes out to $113 an hour, and you look at the Wilcox proposal and it comes out to, to $77 an hour. And that's the rate that they're putting into it.
So did, did these companies bid numbers of hours or did they bid percent of construction fee?
Right, this, the percent of construction fee. And Wilcox, their proposal is 3.6% of the construction fee, and that, that still results in a better figure than MCI's, because MCI also had the max of, not to exceed, which was higher than Wilcox's, as far as foreseeing what the likely outcome is on the maximum. And we would probably have to go to the maximum estimate if they, if they went that far.
And I, and I see that for the base fee, but then if you go over and you look at the construction fee percentage, then Midwestern's a fair amount under, so when I look at those two dollar amounts and I add them together, on the surface, anyway, it looks like Midwestern is almost $12,000 less than Wilcox. And if their bid is on a percent of the project, if they underbidded, that's their problem, right?
You would think so, but as we know it in the past, the project has ended up really involving more time than what they estimated. The other thing is, when we evaluated their scope of work, it did not include all of the work scope items. So basically with their proposal, they're looking at something that may have a past proposal and just converted it over to a current proposal, thinking it's very similar to it. And so I don't believe they have the adequate number of hours or have adequately addressed the scope of work items for this type of project.
Okay, and I can accept that easily. If they haven't included the proper scope in there, then I can accept that we're not accepting a lower bid.
Well, the other factor is that the, the part two fee, the construction engineering fee, we have, have an option on that, that we likely will not award the part two fee, which is the, the part fee, which is the, the figure of the not to exceed figure in the fourth column. For instance, the Wilcox fee of $34,450 and the Midwestern one of $21,937, that is an option. And we likely would only go to the option fee of the per hour, which is in the third column, with fifth column, excuse me, and we would, that would be the preferred route over the first route, because under the, the option fee on the per hour rate, city staff does the field inspection. And then within that, we have three administrative options that we would carry out ourselves. So that in fact, we would then avoid any of the construction not to exceed figure fees. For instance, we would avoid the $34,450 by performing it in-house. Now, the only reason I put it-
We're really only awarding the base fee contract, is that what you're saying?
Yes. We, we're, basically what we're doing is approving the Wilcox proposal. The agreement that we draft, that the mayor will sign, will be basically for the 3.6% only. If you notice up on the, near the top part of the page, where it says construction fee option to be determined in 2012, what happens is that to complete the MDOT programming, we have to have the design engineer onboard now, finish programming in October, get the program signed and bid out in January. MDOT will send us a check for the money, we'll proceed with bidding the project, okay? And then in, in the meantime, before the project is, right around the project is, is being bid, we would select the construction option that will be to our best benefit. And I certainly would not give Wilcox automatically the construction agreement at $34,450 without first coming to the city council. I would inform you before that whether we have determined to go with the construction fee option not to exceed, the construction fee option with the per hour basis, of which Wilcox is $80 an hour and Midwestern is 88, if you went that route. But the, another option is also that we do it with part-time help like we did this year. We're very fortunate to have George D'Anifell come onboard with our three projects, and it's been a, a real godsend, because without George this year, we would have had a very difficult time keeping up with three crews and, and all their activities and putting in 10, 12-hour days. So with George here, it's just been a real great experience and it's been a great benefit for the, for the community as well, because he knows everything about the projects and he knows, you know, basically everybody in that neighborhood. And so everything has worked out really fine with George, and we have avoided the construction fee on $1.3 million, on a $1.3 million project.
Does seem appropriate, then, perhaps, that we amend this motion that's about to come forward to us, that it's to award, or not award, to Wilcox just the design fee not to exceed 237 and stop the motion at that point and eliminate the rest of it for a future motion.
Yeah, that would, that would be fine.
Okay.
That would work.
Yeah, that's just a comment. Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments.
Yeah, the only, the only reason that this occurred this way on this project and why we bid it three different ways is basically that if something happens to me between the next, well, if something happened to me between now and next April, the city needs options to carry out the project, just in case, you know, getting there, you know? And also because under, under the category of we qualify for a direct grant and the, the state would only agree to the direct grant if I would be the project administrator for it. So I had to actually give myself some backup on this with the consultant, to have a consultant who would come onboard in my stead that could carry out the category of administrative functions. And which was, that was written into the documents that we sent out.
No, we're not going to let you go anywhere.
So, so I built in some safeguards for, for the city, just for that scenario.
Okay, further discussion on the motion to acknowledge receipt? Mr. Har?
Um, yes, thank you. Mr. Rubel, I think you said one of the evaluation criteria is professional capabilities?
Yes.
And I see in one of the notes that Wilcox has had no prior projects in Celine, so I was wondering if you would describe how you determine professional capabilities for the firms you're reviewing?
Yes. Wilcox, in their proposals, showed that they, they had experience in with, with state grants. And the fact that they had not worked for the city proper doesn't mean they didn't have a project in the city. They did the MDOT project and they administered the construction phase of the MDOT project in 2002 on, on West Michigan Avenue. And they're state qualified for, for doing design work for civil engineering construction. And they, they had other project examples in their resume.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Further discussion on the motion to acknowledge receipt? Mr. Gearbox?
I may have missed this, but isn't the dollar amount supposed to be 23,720 instead of 23,700 in the motion?
Oh, good call.
I'm sorry, can you state that figure again?
23,720, it says 700 in the motion currently.
On the subsequent motion?
Right.
Good.
Further discussion on the motion to acknowledge receipt? Okay, we have motion on the Florida acknowledgment, no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So it be a motion to award or not award the professional services agreement to Wilcox Professional Services LLC for the Woodland Drive Category F Project as follows. Design phase fee 3.6% and not to exceed $23,720. And to authorize or not authorize the mayor and clerk to access the contract documents with Wilcox Professional Services LLC after review and approval by the city attorney.
Move to award and authorize as amended?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11-138, support for kids driving responsibly legislation. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the communication from Spencer R. Neval, City Manager of the City of Suzanne-Marie, regarding support for legislation to address the issue of inexperienced drivers using cell phones and other communications devices by drivers who are 18 and under. To approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution as submitted supporting legislation to prohibit the use of cell phones and other communication devices by inexperienced drivers. You have a motion?
Move to acknowledge receipt and approve and adopt.
Move Rhodes?
Second?
Second.
Mr. Law?
I'm hesitant to support this motion, not because I disagree with the spirit of it, because I certainly am supportive of any efforts to keep kids safe on the roads, especially those who are driving, and I have a daughter that's going to be doing that soon. So I certainly understand what this, what this motion is trying to drive at. However, I do have an issue with how it would be policed or enforced. And frankly, it's not so much those who are under 18, although that is a concern, but I've seen drivers on their cell phones, my age and older and 30 and something, that cut me off and have done other things, and I don't know why we have to pigeonhole or single out those who are under 18. And on that too, it's just not cell phones, and I'm guilty of this, you know? What about eating and driving? What about shaving and driving? What about putting on makeup and driving? What about combing your hair and driving? I mean, we could go on and on with, you know, why just cell phones? The other issue is, the schools do a great job of, of pointing out and, and quite real instances of the consequences of drinking and driving with the wrecked car and all those other things. Why can't the- Why can't the school districts do the same thing with those who drive while using a cellphone and the dangers that can come from that? It's, it's almost the same scenario, uh, just have the wrecked car and say, "Boys and girls, this is what can happen if you're on your cellphone and you're not paying attention to the rules of the road or not paying attention to the car in front of you." Um, a-again, I have problems where, you know, we have to always go to and make laws and, and say, "Darn it, this is what we're gonna do and this is a law and that's the way it's gonna be," when we don't have, when we really, in many cases, fail to recognize how we're gonna enforce this. And, um, and it doesn't need to be a law, really. As I just pointed out, I think school districts do a great job and can do this adequately with education. Um, so that's, that's all I have to say about that. I, I don't see the need of supporting this.
Mr. Morrow?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually share some of, uh, my colleagues', uh, Mr. Ro, or Mr. Law, excuse me, uh, his concerns. My understanding of the law is that it is currently illegal and, um, it's also my understanding that an individual can be pulled over and ticketed now if they're doing anything in their car that obstructs their field of vision and distracts them from the responsibility of driving. Um, so like my colleague, I, I find it a bit redundant and, and quite frankly, unnecessary. So, um, I will not be supporting, um, this particular resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Rhodes?
Um, as, as the mover here, I guess I'll put my two cents in. Um, I, I also share some of Councilmember Law's comments about the fact that it's not just teenagers that have a problem and it's not just cell phones. But there, there is in fact a limit as to what it is that we can attempt to control and to, um, persuade folks to do things that they ought to do the right way. So, uh, however, this is, this is not a law. This is simply showing that we support the, uh, City of Sault Ste. Marie's, uh, resolution. And as far as how it would be policed, if it ever became a law, uh, within the state, then somebody will figure that out at that point in time. So, uh, while it's not perfect, uh, I, I don't really have a problem supporting it. Thank you.
Um, hold on a second. Anybody over here? Mr. Gerba.
I feel the same as Mr. Morrow and Mr. Law. It's just, uh, the issue's gonna be enforcement on this, but from my perspective, it's not necessarily inexperienced drivers either. It's both of them. It's, it's regular drivers that are having problems with cell phones and such. Concern is, yes, we've got that law. Should it be strengthened in terms of the enforcement of this? But just eighteen and younger, I don't know how they're gonna identify that. They could do twenty-one and younger, those are the same individuals, um, that are having a similar problem. Just two years does not make a difference. Individuals' experience and abilities vary between whether you're young or old, and I mean, there's an issue even with older drivers as it gets farther and farther and studies have shown that. So at this point, I think we've got enough in there that we need to worry about legislatively. I agree with Mr. Rhodes that there are concerns about younger drivers and such, but, um, putting another thing on the plate of our legislature that really has already been sort of addressed and at this point just adds another level of concern of how are we gonna enforce this and pay for it, I think we're looking at lesser government, not as much more government. So I won't be supporting this.
Just, um, I would like to make one comment 'cause, um, I, uh, I agree with, um, my colleagues about that this is a problem with all ages. I have a bigger issue, um, with the fact that we're saying kids drive responsibility and that we're saying eighteen-year-olds and younger because eighteen-year-olds to me are considered adults by law and they have a lot of responsibilities once they turn eighteen and I think that we're not really recognizing that. So, um, if this does move forward, I would be, um, I would have an issue, I would, I would only support this if it was, um, younger than the age of eighteen because the, all our laws change once you're eighteen and there's a lot of things that eighteen-year-olds are required, so. Um, anyhow, so, Mr. Law, you have further?
Just a, just a comment on what Mr. Rhodes said about not having more people, more, you know, guideline, you know, okay, pulling people over or having more laws because they're eating or drinking. Believe me, I am for, as Mr. Gerba said, less government intervention. Forget it. It's exactly, I don't want that. So, don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm not advocating, "Okay, let's pull people over, have laws for people who drink coffee when they're driving or when they're eating a hamburger and driving." No. This deals with this particular issue and, uh, also there is in the motion here, be it resolved, the City of Celine Council urges our state and federal legislators to enact legislation prohibiting the use of cell phones for drivers who are under eighteen, eighteen years or older, or eighteen years old or younger. So, it's urging action when there's not, there doesn't need to be action.
Mr. Campbell, I know that this, um, a fellow city manager, I believe that the goal here is to, um, garnet, gather resolutions and at the annual meeting at, um, in Grand Rapids. I think he's gonna present this as part of the recommendations towards policy changes, is that correct?
Right.
Do you wanna just sort of clarify what, how you received this and what, I know you received it through email or something, so maybe if you wanna speak to that a little bit, just-
Sure.
You should've probably said that first.
Sure, that's right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, this was, uh, um, one of the, the documents that, that was included is, um, City of Sault, Sault Ste. Marie City Council has sent a request to the MML Board of, Michigan Municipal League Board of Trustees, um, to put this on their annual convention, uh, business meeting where they, they have proposals from all over different communities for them to support or not support, as it may be. Um, and this is one of them, it was also, uh, put out, uh, by, um, city manager for anybody that, that was interested to consider, um, doing that. So I talked to the mayor, um, and she said, "Sure, let's, you know, at least see if there's any consideration one way or the other." Um, so, um, that's why we, we place it on there and, and to see if, if city council was interested in, in one way or the other.
So, is there further discussion on this motion? Mr. Law?
Need on this motion, but just maybe if we could support a motion or make a motion, support the efforts by those like Sault Ste. Marie and others to, um, better educate young drivers on the dangers of using cell phones or texting or whatever it is, um, not-
Maybe we could bring something back. I, I think the intent, they're have a format and the way the annual meeting works at the, at the, in the league is that they're gonna present, um, uh, language to insert into the, the policies that the league, um, works off of when they lobby our state and, uh, federal legislators. So, um, I think that while I totally appreciate what you're trying to do and say, I don't think it's gonna be beneficial to Spence in his presentation. So, I, it might be, uh, better, we might be better served to just have the city manager speak to his fellow city manager and say, "You know, we struggle with this for these reasons and, you know, we feel that if, if it doesn't pass, that the better mo, uh, process at this point in time is to address it with driver's education."
Yeah.
Okay? So, I mean, let's see what happens with the motion because it might actually pass. Is there further discussion on the motion? If there's no further discussion on the motion, we do have a motion to approve and adopt the, um, resolution as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, mo, the motion dies for lack of support. Um, I don't think we really necessarily need a motion to ask Mr. Campbell to speak with Spence about that, but, you know, Mr. Law, if you'd like to do a motion or something, or we could just say direct staff to-
That's fine. Let's find-
So, Mr. Campbell, you, and I'd be happy to talk to him while we're there too. So, and I'm sure Mr. Rhodes would also. I, I do, you know, it's a tragedy, um, that they're trying to help not, um, have that tragedy occur in other communities, losing a child in an accident like that is horrific. So there's, it's a difficult situation that way, so. Um, uh, item eleven one thirty-nine, the resolution opposing the repeal of personal property taxes. Um, I, before, I would like to amend, I should've actually told, called Todd and told him this, but it was a busy day today. I'd like to add on the second to last paragraph where it says, "Whereas the personal property tax is now one of the single most important and stable sources of funds for local governments in Michigan, making up more than fifty percent of budgets of some Michigan communities." And then I would like to add after that, "And twenty percent of our current budget," is that correct, Mr. Verghoyen? Um, 'cause I think we need to-
Twenty-eight percent of our valuation.
Of our valuation, excuse me, thank you. Okay. Um, I think it's important for them to have some kind of perspective on what it, why this is so meaningful to the Celine community. So if, um, everybody on city council would be okay with my adding that, I will read the motion to approve and adopt the resolution as amended, opposing any efforts by the Michigan legislature to repeal the personal property tax without fully replacing the revenues that would be lost.
Move to approve.
Would, do we wanna say guaranteed because maybe add that in the motion? This, is that sufficient?
This is what will be said, so it says constitutionally guaranteed.
Okay. We might wanna put that in the motion just because that will be... I think, I, um, so you, you moved it, Mr. Morrow?
Yeah, did you want the word guarantee though?
I'm, I, well, let's have some discussion, let's, go ahead, I apologize.
Nope.
I'm a little-
All right. I moved to approve and adopt.
There's been a lot of conversation since this came out and, um, so-
I'll, I'll support, I just need to know where you're fixing it.
Okay, so, basically, so right now we have a motion to approve the resolution, um, that, uh, without, uh, so to repeat, to not, to oppose any efforts by the legislature to repeal the personal property tax without fully replacing the revenues that would be lost. And I guess we say in this last paragraph that, um, we oppose any effort to repeal a personal property tax that fails to include full, not partial, constitutionally guaranteed replacement of funds for local governments. I'm thinking that we probably wanna have that in the motion also because Proposal A was presented to our community in nineteen ninety-three that there would be a replacement. And we have, I guess, three mills at this point with shortfall, we've had to raise our millage locally because of the legislative actions. So, I'm seri, very concerned and Todd and I have been talking since I came back from our family holiday about trying to do some kind of town hall outreach. This is a, uh, debilitating blow to our government and governments across the state. And, um, while they say they're gonna guarantee replacement, we have historical fact that that replacement they say they're gonna guarantee doesn't happen. So I, I am very concerned about the league, you know, being able to do that. Mr. Verghoyen, you?
Um, the statements that I have heard have not guaranteed a replacement.
That's what the league is saying. So the league is saying-
Oh, 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 I see, but, but-
Replace, don't erase. They have a whole website, they're, they're, they, so I guess we have a motion on the floor, so maybe we'll have some discussion and the league is advocating because they're hearing that there's a movement that's very strong to get rid of this and their concern is, well, can we meet them halfway? And so we're sort of in this, so, Mr. Rhodes and then Mr. Morrow?
And, um, a question on this, um, little section here that talks about guaranteed replacement of funds. And at what level, whenever the legislature passes, or what our level of funding is now, or what our level of funding used to be?
It's a good question. I mean, there, it's all in negoti, my understanding, I don't know, my understanding and I know, uh, city manager and I have been talking and following this on the listserv and, um, that the league has been working very closely with the governor's office, the governor understands that this is, you know, catastrophic to a lot of local governments, um, and they're talking about different methodologies like phasing in this elimination. I mean, it's important to the business sector. However, as we have also noticed in this resolution that the business sector is take, you know, just got a one billion dollar tax cut and now we're talking about another, you know, huge tax cut. This would be one billion and we just did a tax cut. So, you know, how much are we gonna cut? So, I understand what you're saying, but I think it's being negotiated. So what, where, the league's position has been, if you're gonna do this, you need to provide some kind of guarantee for us. So I don't think it's, we don't have, I, I don't know if you've heard of a formal position that the league set on, you know, at what, what place would it be? I would assume it would be as of the time it goes into effect. But there is talk about phasing it over several years. There's a couple of different methodologies. So, this is, um, the league really asked us to respond quick, quickly and aggressively, so we are putting this out now, but I believe that there's gonna be some much more thorough follow-up. We already spoke with, um, oh, Mr. Campbell, go ahead.
No, no, I was just gonna add, when you talked about the, one of the phased approaches, um, I believe you all received a copy of the Crane's article that came out a few weeks ago. And, um, Lieutenant Governor Calley basically said, you know, he's not looking at replacing, he wants to get, he wants to eliminate it. And he cited in that story is the, the, um, State of Ohio example where they did away with it in two thousand and five and they basically said, "Well, we'll guarantee you funding through two thousand and eighteen." Well, now for the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen with an eight billion dollar budget gap, um, it's gone now, or it's gonna be gone. Um, so instead of in two thousand and eighteen, it's gonna be fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, so, you know, five years earlier than, so that's a concern that we have too is if they say, "Well, we'll, you know, the, the phased in is not acceptable." Well, from my perspective, just because of what, what we know can't happen.
So, Mr. Rhodes, hurry.
Yeah, and the point that I was getting at was that if we're gonna adopt a position, and we certainly do need to adopt a position on this, that we ought to say that as a minimum, it should be no less than the current level of funding. Because it, they could take them six months, nine months, a year-
Okay.
-to pass this thing and it'll probably be lower then.
How, what would be the most appropriate way to word that, Mr. Verghoyen? Do you understand what he's saying?
Yes, I, I understood that. I, I, I thought what he said-
Okay.
...made sense.
There you go, what a couple.
All right. One second.
So after, local governments would be at our current level of funding. Um, I, I'm gonna read this resolution for the citizens because this is incredibly alarming to our community. Twenty percent is, it's, I think we, you know, I don't know what we would do with twenty percent, especially, you know, with the way things are already deteriorating. It's just, it's, like I said earlier, it's catastrophic. So, I would like to read this, um, resolution for the, our constituents and then, um, have further discussion on it. And again, um, Todd and I have been talking with the schools about possibly having a town hall meeting to raise awareness. So, uh, whereas residents of the city of Celine and state of Michigan depend on police, fire, and fire protection, well-kept streets, including plowed roads in the winter and other essential services, and whereas some in Lansing want to totally eliminate an important source of funding for these services by repealing the personal property tax paid by Michigan businesses. And whereas eliminating the personal property tax would cut Michigan businesses, business taxes another one billion dollars this year, months after businesses received the largest tax cut in Michigan history, two billion cut approved this summer. And whereas business taxes in Michigan are now low and competitive compared to other states. And whereas local government budgets across Michigan have been financially devastated in the past decade, declining real property values have drained hundreds of millions of dollars from local budgets as property tax revenues have plummeted, and the legislature and governor have repeatedly broken the state's promise to provide revenue sharing to schools and local communities across Michigan following the sales tax increase to six percent, which is the Proposal A I referred to earlier that occurred in nineteen ninety-three, I believe. Whereas in the past decade, revenue sharing has been cut by more than four billion dollars, causing massive police and fire, fire layoffs in many communities and cuts to other basic citizen services such as road repair and maintenance, lawn mowing, snow plowing, and more across the state. And whereas eliminating the personal property tax to pay for another one billion tax cut for Michigan businesses without fully replacing the revenues would slash revenues for local governments by another one billion dollars and would financially devastate hundreds of local communities. And whereas the local, the personal property tax is now one of the single most important and stable sources of funds for local governments in Michigan, making up more than fifty percent of budgets of some Michigan communities and twenty percent of our valuation, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Celine hereby opposes any effort to repeal the personal property tax that fails to include full, not partial, constitutionally guaranteed replacement of funds for local governments at our current level of funding. Okay, so that's how it's currently written. Okay, Mr. Morrow?
Uh, yeah, I appreciate it, Mayor, and, um, I appreciate you putting this on the agenda because it is so timely. Um, and I don't know if my colleagues, um, saw off the record yesterday on PBS with Tim Skubik, but our good state senator, the, uh, majority leader of the state senate, Randy Richardville was his guest and a bulk of the time was, uh, a bulk of the Q and A time was devoted to, um, schools of choice and, um, the personal property taxes. And Senator Richard Mil, Richardville, excuse me, made it very clear that, uh, a, a bill to eliminate personal property taxes is moving and it's going to move very quickly. Um, so time is of the essence and it's not only important that we pass a resolution tonight, but it's also important that those of you who are in the audience and who may be listening at home, um, contact your legislatures, legislators- at home, contact your legislatures, legislators, excuse me, to let them know how devastating this would be. You know, the talking heads in Lansing, and I appreciate Mr. Campbell providing that Crane's article that quoted Lieutenant Governor Calley. He's a good man, don't get me wrong, but he just doesn't get it. You know, they seem to indicate that this is such a detriment, and it's so counterintuitive towards businesses when they're investigating the feasibility of setting up shop and moving to Michigan. And although personal property taxes in that particular system is far from perfect, I have a hunch or an inclination to believe that cities that are at the edge of bankruptcy, who can't properly fund police and fire services and have crumbling infrastructure, would be more of a deterrent to businesses setting up shop than personal property taxes would. So again, this is really, time is of the essence, folks. And in addition to passing this resolution tonight, again, for those of you in the audience, please take the time to contact either your state rep or state senator and urge them to vote against the current proposal, which would scrap personal property taxes without a replacement. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. The other thing that I wanted to also point out is that there is talk about, you know, making it a local decision. Well, three mills, that's what we're talking about. I mean, it's so, okay, so we're going to say on our local residents, we're going to have a vote. I mean, it's just sort of, it's the passing the buck thing that seems to keep happening, so I'm really concerned about it. Mr. Campbell?
Just anecdotal comment. I just, Councilman Rhodes and I attended a seminar, Economic Development Seminar, if you will, this past Friday that was hosted by our State Representative, Mr. Womack. And one of the- a couple of the presenters were from the MEDC, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And one of the- they were, it was kind of an overview for folks, and there was countywide officials from chambers to supervisor, town officials and the like. And as he was going through his presentation, this was the Vice President of Governmental Affairs, I believe, and he said, "And we're on the verge of eliminating the personal property tax." And he said it like it was a good thing. And the reason I bring that up is, as Mayor Pro-Tim Marl mentioned about Lieutenant Governor Calley, yes, he's a good guy, but just doesn't get it, and I don't believe the MEDC really understands the implications or the, as Chief Button likes to, we like to discuss the unintended consequences to our communities to be able to provide quality services, quality educations, and the like.
So I would ask and urge all the City Council not only to call our State Rep and our State Senator, but also our Governor. And it sounds like maybe we should be calling Mr. Finney, MEDC, since when he was on the CEO or in our Spark Board, which I'm a committee member, he- all he talked about was talent and quality of life. And a 20% cut would destroy our quality of life. So I have a few calls I need to make myself. I've made a few. I- we were on a conference call with Mr. Womack while I was driving to my family place in Vermont, and he said, "Yeah, I've heard from you about 11 times by now about how you feel about this issue." But he's not responding in the affirmative that he's going to help us. And really, there's not, you know, we have already made, you know, we've cut 10% of our workforce, we don't replace positions, we've done so many different things to try to address the cuts that we've had over the last 10 years that... And also, we've had, like I mentioned earlier, we've had to adjust our millage for the Proposal A that was, you know, put out. So it's a very significant, very serious problem, so... Further discussion on this motion? I'll keep you apprised. Todd and I are hoping to meet with a school board representative and Mr. Grayden and set up a time to have a meeting, because it does impact the schools also in a different way. It's sort of very convoluted, so it's going to be really complicated to explain. But anyhow, so we have a motion with an amended resolution. I actually read it wrong, or actually Diane asked me to correct it, so what we changed it to was constitutionally guarantee replacement of funds for local governments at no less than our current level of funding. If that's okay with everybody? Any further discussion? We all in favor to approve and adopt? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, 140, renewal of Act 88, Economic Development Millage, Washtenaw County. This is a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution as submitted, urging the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners to renew the Act 88 Economic Development Millage. We're going to make a motion. I need to explain it because I didn't have a cover memo. It just happened pretty quickly. But I can speak to it before the motion, if that would be helpful, since I brought it forward. Act 88 is a very, not very, not very used act that the county has used to fund the Ann Arbor Spark to the tune of $250,000, among other things. The total revenues for them is $600,000. And it's a significant source of revenue for Ann Arbor Spark that matches, you know, private dollars and leverages other, there's some 21st century capital funds from the state. There's a lot of money that comes from the state to match the operating dollars that... So it's a really important revenue source to the Ann Arbor Spark to be successful. So when it came up that, there was some concern about this possibility that might not be renewed. The city of Ann Arbor and the city of Ypsilanti have already submitted a resolution urging the Commissioners, and so I brought this forward for all of us to consider. So it's currently in place, it's just a renewal. Is there any- do we have a motion?
Do we have a little more discussion?
Sure.
The renewal millage is for what period of time?
I believe, that's a good question. I believe it's a year.
Yeah, it's annual.
That's kind of what I was thinking, was a year or two, but their public notice says .05 mills.
Right. There is a small increase because, because I went to the County Commissioner meeting last week, and it's a small increase because of the decrease in property valuations. So to create the same amount of revenue that was generated the last time.
Okay, so we're all right with that wording that we have there, though?
Mm-hmm.
Because it talks about a current... Okay.
So is there a motion?
I have one quick question.
Mr. Peter.
Maybe it's just, I'm trying to understand, should there be a section or something attached to section of the Act 88? That's a very broad term. It goes back to 1913, and that can deal with immigration, agriculture, trade. It can deal with tourism and retirement. And I don't know exactly how Spark fits into this. If it's a pension issue, then I might have a-
It's purely economic development dollars, as you said, for the budget.
So it's just advertising and promotion?
Yes. Well, it's to support the staff on, in the Ann Arbor Spark, but it, that's a portion, it's about one-third of the whole county amount. So we basically took the resolution that was adopted by the city of Ann Arbor and the city of Ypsilanti and just presented it, so...
So this is not a pension issue?
No.
Good.
Mr. Kiermaier?
I was just going to mention, I spoke with Alicia Ping, our County Representative, and it talked about this. Part of her concern with it is that some of these funds were used by, I guess, different divisions of promotion, Spark, I guess, Eastern, which, and there's questions about how those funds were used and such. Also, it supports activities at the, like, 4-H Club through agriculture and some of those things. She said this item could be moved back into the general fund budget by eliminating this, but of course, that's going to be cutting other aspects. My concern is that as long as these funds are used appropriately for, you know, generating economic development and such, that's fine. I have to guess there's been some history in the past that need to be addressed, but I think they've been dealt with. So I'm seeing this as one way of continuing to support what we need to have happen, especially with education issues and stuff that relate to supporting some of our youth groups, things that are occurring, just because we continually keep funding and cutting everything that's associated to education, and the more that happens, the more the state is just going to start going downhill, so... At least this is something that's a renewal, it's not something being added.
I think it's, it's, they had Ways and Means Meeting on it, and I believe it was passed. I left, because they went into closed in the middle of the meeting, so I just, anyhow. So I left before the final, but I, my understanding is that it was looked upon favorably, the renewal, so... To further questions?
Ready for a motion?
Yes.
I would move to approve and adopt.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, so is there discussion? Questions? Too bad Donna was here earlier with our businesses. She could have talked to it a little bit, too. I probably should have asked her. Anyhow. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, 141, request by Teamsters Local Number 214 to extend their contract to June 30th, 2013. This would be a motion to acknowledge receipt of September 7th, 2011 letter from Alan A. Lewis, Business Representative, Teamsters Local 214.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
You're most mover. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As Mr. Eric Grossman, Chief Steward for the Teamsters Local 214, mentioned earlier in the meeting, they're requesting another extension. You may recall that they're currently on an extension that was agreed upon last November, December, evolving around healthcare concessions, as well as wage freeze for this current fiscal year that we're in, which is certainly greatly appreciated. And as he said, they certainly agree 100% that they do work with the city and have stepped up each time that we've asked them to because of the financial difficulty that communities are in. However, I don't believe it's be appropriate to move forward. One, they are already currently have an extension, in the middle of an extension, that the original collective bargaining agreement, the CBA, the original date, expiration date was June 30th of this year, 2011, was extended to June 30th, 2012. With the new healthcare legislation, this is simply to try and skirt impending legislation that has not been to date there, unless it happened today, signed by the Governor, but it will be signed by the Governor. At least that's what we've been told emphatically. And I just, I don't believe that there's an appropriate amount of time to do a responsible review and investigation, because the other caveat in this is that anything that's agreed to after September 15th has to fall under the new, new rules, new law of the hard cap and/or the 80/20. The other, the other item is that it's highly inappropriate for them to try and attempt to negotiate directly with the City Council. The City Council has designated the City Manager's position as a negotiator for collective bargaining for the city. And we've had discussions and, as well. But again, I just don't think that there's, the timeframe, I don't think is appropriate as well as, or it's not practical in any appropriateness of trying to directly negotiate. Happy to answer as many questions as I can.
Any questions from Council? Not? We have a motion on the floor to acknowledge receipt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Um, I, I appreciate everything the Teamster does, and I know this vote doesn't seem like that, and I appreciate that you come to the table in good faith, so this is a tough situation. So anyhow. Under discussion, Commission Committee reports from Council members. Mr. Har.
The Arts and Culture Committee is anticipating dedication of the downtown public art project during the Harvest of the Arts Oktoberfest. Tentatively, dedication will take place on Saturday, the 24th, at 10:30. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner Committee reports? Mr. Rhodes?
The Environmental Commission met on August 17th, and Frank Stuckenberg from Saline River Greenway Alliance came and gave a presentation to us on their efforts to move forward with that program. And the Environmental Commission received that information, and we didn't take a vote on it, but we committed to doing what we could to help that effort move along. And I have some information I will give to Mr. Campbell later, because they've asked for a motion at some point in time from Council to take a formal position on that. The, we also agreed that we would again co-sponsor another electronic waste recycling program, and that is scheduled for November the 5th, a Saturday from 9:00 to 4:00. And it will be held at the Team Center, same location as before. Also a reminder that the Environmental Commission tent is set up at the Farmer's Market, the Summer Market. That'll be there through October. And those nonprofits who wish to utilize that space should contact Connie DeHaan to schedule. We will have a miniature park that we're going to set up at the Oktoberfest Harvest of the Arts on September 24th out in the street to demonstrate the advantages of having lawn or, as opposed to hard paved surfaces. And we'll also have a rain barrel set up there to demonstrate how that will work, for those who may not know about that. And we passed a resolution that would be forwarded to Mr. Campbell, a resolution to require all public events on city property to provide recycled containers in a minimum ratio of one for every two regular trash containers. And then the last significant thing we talked about was a request from our mayor to look into getting some more water bottles and to have the commission logo and a city seal on them. And we are doing that, but we're not going to be able to procure them in time for Lindenberg Group, which is coming into town. And I believe that's it. Thank you.
There are other Commissioner Committee reports? No? Okay, reports or other announcements? Mr. Locke?
I just wanted to say thank you to those who helped organize yesterday's 9/11 ceremony outside the fire hall. And it was appropriate and targeted at the right people, those who are the first responders, not the politicians. So I appreciate them doing what they did and certainly marking a very tragic day in this country.
Mr. Marl?
Two announcements, actually, Mayor. The first of which is I do want to extend a sincere thank you to all members of Council who were able to attend and participate in the Weber Bliss's One Room Schoolhouse Ice Cream Social. For those of you who were unable to attend, I am pleased to announce that City Council did defeat a contingent of representing the Saline area schools in the croquet tournament. It was neck and neck there for a while, but Mr. Rhodes' stunning performance at the end allowed us the opportunity to reclaim the trophy, which I think the Committee is going to engrave again to denote that the City Council won that tournament in 2011 as well as 2009. So again, thank you for attending. It was a great event. It was a moneymaker for our entity and group, and I think those who attended had a lot of fun. And then the other thing, I feel sort of compelled to respond as the incoming Secretary for the Michigan Municipal League to some confusion that exists regarding the League and regarding the Fall Conference in Grand Rapids. The statement was made that it was a political junket, which is patently absurd. MML is nationally recognized as a wonderful entity that provides municipalities and councils with educational resources. Their conferences are not vaca- Their conferences are not vacations. It's not Club Med, and it's not sandals. You work and you learn, and it provides a great opportunity for networking. In addition to those educational resources and programs, the league also provides municipalities with vital services, i.e. liability insurance and workman's comp. So if people have concerns about money being well-spent, please don't worry, because when we go to Michigan Municipal League functions, we learn, and there's a tangible benefit to the city. Thank you.
Mr. Har.
One week from today, 18 guests from our sister city Lindenberg in Himalagoy will be arriving in Saline. And I encourage all council members and members of the public to attend some of the events that are open to the public. There will be an official welcome here at City Hall at 7:00 PM on September 20th, that's next Tuesday. And the Harvest of the Arts Oktoberfest is occurring on September 23rd and 24th, and we hope to have some of our Lindenberg guests attending there and possibly even sitting in a well-identified spot so people can come and meet them. And finally, on September 29th, which is Thursday, there is, our farewell dinner will be held at Collison Farm, and that is open to the public. A few tickets, several tickets are still available for that. The cost is $15. It will be, we've, the board has planned a barn dance, and will be catered with barbecue. We wanted to have a very American event, and members of the public are welcome. So I encourage you to attend and take any opportunity you can to meet and welcome our guests to Saline. Thank you.
Okay. I just realized I'm traveling on the 29th. Family business, anyhow. So I just also wanted to add, I'm just screwed up. Next week on the Tuesday is a welcome reception here that we will be hosting for Lindenberg and the, actually officials, staff, employees, host families, and any public members that would like to join us in celebrating, recognizing our partnership with Lindenberg. It's a very strong partnership. There's people that have gone back and forth, and we have a few people that work at Le Paire that actually used to live in Lindenberg, and there's a lot of Lindenberg people that come back and forth through Le Paire also. And Le Paire is a significant employer in our community, so it's great to actually have a partner city. At the same time, we have a partner business. Works out very nicely. So I just wanted to make sure that, I don't think you mentioned on the 20th that that, you know, we don't have it as a formal, you know, we didn't really formally say it's a public, but it is public, because this is a public building and it is a public body. And of course, we always are looking for new people to get involved with our sister city relationships, so. Okay. And is there any other announcements? Mr. Rhodes?
I would just say as a follow-up to what you just said about that welcome thing, the Saline Area Sustainability Circle is going to meet here probably at 6:00, just before that. And so we'll extend an invitation to them to come on up.
Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be great. And just to follow up on what you said, Mr. Marl, about the meeting, I don't have the agenda right now with, for our conference in Grand Rapids, but we do have a very strong relationship with the league, and they actually have come, they've brought several staff here multiple times. They went to a conference on building public places, and they were using Saline as a model. They really, Saline has been on their, what is that? The heads, the, you know, the bar that goes across the website for a long time as their, because they have the whole, their mission is to educate, advocate, and assist. And as I mentioned before, they've been really actively working with the governor. They were actually one of the first organizations to be meeting with the governor when he was first elected, as far as how to deal with some of the issues that are on the ground on a daily basis. So he, the, I think there is great respect in the House and Senate regarding the league, and we do learn a tremendous amount. And every time we go, we, there's opportunities to learn about grants that are available. We learn about best practices throughout the state, and there's usually speakers that come in that are national speakers that talk about other opportunities. I believe there's going to be some, I have not actually personally seen the agenda, but I know that it's always very full. So we learn a lot. Things are always changing. There's obviously, if we didn't have a league right now, we probably wouldn't even be on our toes with this personal property tax. And they've done a lot of work compiling, a lot of data. There's actually a website, for those of you that haven't seen it yet, called, what did I say before? Replace, Don't Erase. You'll find it on the league website, and there's a lot of information for those of you that need to have more information to get up to speed on the issue. But they're very vital to the future of local government, so. So Senate Bill 7, caps on public employer contributions to medical benefits. I know that's partly why the Teamsters came up today. If you would like to speak to that, that was recently passed, right? Like you said, it hasn't been signed yet by the governor, but...
Correct. It's...
It's going to be effective September 15th, impact contracts? So I know you wanted to highlight some issues, make sure council is up to speed on that.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Senate Bill 7 essentially has passed both the Senate, State Senate, State House, waiting for the governor's signature. And essentially, it's called Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act. They talk about a hard cap and an 80%, 20% contribution. So the hard cap, which the hard cap will be increased based on the annual CPI as it relates to medical costs. But currently, it would be $5,500 for a single-person coverage would be the max. This would be the hard cap, the ceiling that the city could pay for employee. $11,000 for a two-person, so an individual, a spouse, coverage, and $15,000 for family, employee and family. Anything over that, the employee would be responsible for. The 80, the other option is the 80/20. The city as employer could not pay more than 80% of the cost, and the employee would have to pick up the 20% minimum. There is a opt-out provision. The City Council could by a two-thirds vote of the governing body each year, could opt out of this. There will be significant savings, at least as a poll, as I mentioned earlier, the cursory review that we did with CAPNIC, certainly some, with the current, I will say with the current plans that we offer now through Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan, some significant savings. As far as, as I also mentioned, collective bargaining agreements, anything that's entered into by the 15th, then if there was a change, for instance, to extend, then they would not have to comply. But anything after the 15th would have to comply with the new law. And then one of the, one of the questions out there says, penalties, failure to comply with this act will result in the state treasurer reducing each economic vitality incentive program payment by 10%. And you may recall, the EVIP, the Economic Vitality Incentive Program is another, the governor's new name for statutory revenue sharing. And, but by complying, you know, our stance is, our interpretation currently anyway, is even if you did opt out by two-thirds vote, that would be complying, because you complied by the proper way to opt out. But there's still a lot to review, and there again, there are significant savings. But having said that, I think it's probably if we go down that road, once this new law is on the books and comply with it, we may have to look at, which we're already working with CAPNIC, to look at proposals with different carriers and providers, but also different coverages to help, because, simply because it may be too expensive for an employee or employees, for instance, to be able to have to pay that, you know, that difference. So we sort of want to be cognizant of that and continue to provide good coverage, but something that is affordable as well. So I think...
No, I, if we have loss of personal property revenues, and we do not have three replacement mills, let's say it hits us by three mills, we only have excess levy capacity of 1.8 mills. So we can't even replace it. So if we are hit by that loss, and even if they phased it in over five years or whatever, then we would have maybe 3% or 4% of the total budget reduction each year. You're going to have to do something, and you're going to have to take advantage of this. In a way, it seems as though the police are extended out a couple of years. In fairness, you wouldn't want to let one group get away with not complying, but on the other hand, if you just don't have the revenues, then all you can do is ask that group to come back and renegotiate, and you have to somehow find something less expensive for the others, if you don't have the funds.
We're going to be talking about this when CAPNIC's doing an analysis, and I mean, you want to talk about our next steps?
Sure. Sure, absolutely. Our next steps, and we don't have renewal numbers, you know, we should get them in the next month or two, hopefully. You all may recall, those that have been here the last couple of years, unfortunately, we've not gotten them until the 11th hour in trying to make, you know, do analysis. So we will, just like last year, we had work session with bringing CAPNIC in and help explain, and us hopefully all understand and are on the same page and moving forward. And so we'll do the same thing as soon as we get those numbers. And we, like I said, we are currently going out, just like we did earlier this year, to look at other potential providers for insurance.
Any questions? Mr. Marl?
Just a comment, really, Mayor. I want to thank Mr. Campbell, because I actually contacted him directly last week regarding this piece of legislation or what is soon to become a law, and asked that he put it on the discussion item and present on the city's behalf. And I appreciate the thorough analysis and report, as well as Mr. Burgoyne's comments. And I thought it was an important and timely issue, and one that we got out on front of it, and understood both the benefits and the ramifications. So thank you again, Mr. Campbell.
Is there further discussion items? Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just very briefly, to piggyback on what Mr. Rhodes had mentioned about the Saline Area Sustainability Circle, meaning to give updates, is we have actually three representatives to that board, the mayor, Mr. Rhodes, and myself, which I happen to be the chair of. But one of the things we've been working on for quite some time is, and let me back up for those that may not be aware of, the Saline Area Sustainability Circle is made up of the City of Saline, Lodi Township, York Township, Pittsfield Township, Saline Township, Saline Area Schools, and the Chamber. And it's been around since the late 90s. And in 2004, I believe, they actually adopted, the group actually adopted regional planning guidelines. And then at the time, I believe the city was the only one that actually took it forward and adopted it into their master plan. But now, as all the entities have, I believe they're all now have updated their master plan as of this year, some of them have incorporated at least some of the ideas, if not by reference of the regional plan. But since the hour is late, just wanted to let you know, we've been working on regional planning from, not necessarily a real, a strong formal format, but an advisory, if you will, by essentially taking the, as I mentioned, the recently updated master plans of all the jurisdictions and putting them together as one for a regional plan as a first step towards maybe something further down the road where it would be, but this would be probably years down the road, but as more of a, creating one potential regional planning commission and the regional master plan. But again, this is not, not there yet, not even close to being there yet. But it's a step in the right direction of working together and building that trust. But the reason I bring it up is there, and we'll send out invitations as well, but on the 28th, Gary's left, but I believe it's the 28th of September, there'll be a joint meeting of the Saline, City of Saline Planning Commission and City Council. And we have, we've been working with, most of you know Doug Luhan, he's been the city planner for many, many years. He's actually been working for free currently with this Sustainability Circle to help us move this forward. And he actually was scheduled to do the first presentation to York Township, a joint meeting between the Township Board and the Planning Commission tonight, to see, are they, this is what we're proposing, and are you interested? You know, and then he's going to do this, and we're all, as many as we can will go to those other meetings as well to help support and give our input. But as a professional planner, certainly he has a much stronger grasp than the layman, if you will. So we're scheduled for the 28th then. So tonight was York 28th here in Saline. And I'm working on the other three entities, Pittsfield Township, Lodi Township, and Saline Township, to secure a date, specific date, so we can present to their bodies as well. So I just wanted to let you know that that is coming forward.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion items? Under public comment under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or questions. City council is public comment period. We'll be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary, House 600 Canterbury. Earlier tonight, there was a work meeting on the Celtic Festival, and you didn't address, Mayor, that that will be on the agenda next Monday. There was a lot of information, and of course, with all the good news as far as financial woes, the Celtic Festival came up with they're going to do better. There was questions on many things, but financially, they still are asking for our help, although they have somehow a foundation of which some money is going into the foundation. And I would hope that at the next meeting, that is addressed so that the public is aware of this. As you said, financially, we got problems. And yet, at the Celtic Festival meeting, I think if I heard you right, you said not everything is about money. I mean, bringing people in and having, you didn't use the word commodity, commodity, but anyway, it is about money. It is a business. And as the taxpayers, it appears with some of the problems, we may be addressing a tax concern. We've lost two DPW people in the last four or five years, and that replaced them. Our police department, there was a concern. And I think at this point, our DPW has all they can handle with the Celtic Festival and their duties to service the city. Thank you.
I've been here before, so you know who I am, John Heller, 213 Sheffield. And it is a political junket, Brian. Definition of a political junket is politicians traveling somewhere at public expense, and that's what you're doing. And whether or not it's useful or not, I think is beyond the point. It's the symbolism of it. You're spending $1,800 to send people to Grand Rapids, which granted, isn't very far, and it's not much money. But the symbol of it, symbolism of it is, is that people, unless I'm mistaken, people I talk to may not be the people you talk to, but I think that's why citizens are opposed to government, are opposed to taxes, and why you're going to have trouble convincing them that it's important to keep that 20%. They see you spending that kind of money to travel, you personally, and they get upset. And they are not going to support more taxes, or not support, and not support, not leveling, not levying the 20% personal income tax. That's where the opposition to that kind of stuff comes from. And I think you're cutting your own throats by doing that. your own throats by doing that kind of stuff. So I think, you know, call it political, call it a political junket, call it what you will. I'm going to keep calling it a political junket. We'll see in November if people agree with me or with you. So, but I think you're hurting yourselves by doing that kind of thing and spending that kind of money for that kind of thing. I think that's where the opposition to taxes come from, is that kind of spending. Thank you.
My name is Jim Roth, 186 Annwood Court, and I wanted to just speak to a couple of the things that you had for discussion items tonight, plus agenda items. The 111, 139, as far as personal property tax being cut and so on, the proposals, I think it's very, very important that you pursue that idea of having a town meeting, because it's going to affect not only you, as we as a city, it's going to affect the school systems, and it's really a financial crunch. I think all citizens need to be made aware of this, just not those who are keying in on our particular problems here with the city. I mean, it's reaching very, very deep in the pockets, because it's, we've already had so much favor, our governor is favoring businesses and the emphasis on businesses, and are overlooking the other citizens, and we are the ones that are paying the taxes. We have no way of recouping it. Businesses always charge us for it in their prices and services that they provide. So that's built into it, but we as citizens don't have a chance to recoup it. And we as city, for the city, we have no way of doing it. So get our citizens involved, have our state representatives here so they know that the citizens are involved. We need to get to the very, very grassroots. The second one is far as the taxing for Washington County property tax, or excuse me, the Renewal Act 88 Economic Development Millage. I have a question. The county already approved it. They're asking you to approve it. Is this not going to the public for a vote? Does it have to go to the public for a vote? It's just going to be an increase of our taxes, continuation of taxes, without the public voting on it?
It's a county vote. It's a county vote. We didn't approve it.
Well, I'm just saying, why are we doing it here if the counties have already done it?
They haven't done it. It's a recommendation.
Okay. So I'm just, just really have, I'm confused with the issue. I read that the county did it. I see now that we're doing something about it, and since it's a tax issue, renewal of millage, why isn't it going to the public for a vote? Why does it not have to? That's my question. I think that should be clarified to the public. Thank you.
I'm disappointed there was not more discussion on the proposal. I understand much of what you talked tonight about, the personal property tax, the caps on healthcare, all these things interrelate, and the purpose that I, or not really the purpose, but the reason, the timing was the way it was, is not so much to jump in and save the 20%. It was my last opportunity to make an extension. But the bigger reason was that when we have changed the years of our contracts, the issue that Mr. Campbell was talking about, if our contract is up now, we're going to be looking at different healthcare packages. If we pull out of the current package, that's going to leave the police department in the original package. And my guess is that their costs are going to spike severely, because now we have abandoned our original group in a quest for a different package in healthcare. These are the reasons that I don't believe dividing up the groups is in our best interest. When we have everyone moving as one, we can look into healthcare and find something that works for all the employees. Now, I think we're going to be stuck, either we're not going to be able to make some choices because it's going to impact the police. We can't pull out because of the spike. So hopefully, if this kind of scenario plays out, that you're not looking at the overall healthcare costs for the employees, but not impacting us to make a choice that might help our group, but at the same time, raise overall healthcare costs for the whole city, because we're moving into different pods like we used to be. And that really was, my major concern was that we needed to go in a cohesive manner, because things are changing statewide, and we all, we all understand that, but we all can't just accept, you can't accept, and I can't as an employee, that we just all pay more. That's not sustainable. So we do need to all work together and find a solution, and that's, that was my emphasis. We, we needed to move in a group and not be divided and attack this in different years. And, you know, that's the situation we're now going to have. And I do apologize to Mr. Campbell. Could I have just a moment? For, I know our steward improperly followed some procedures to get this on. She didn't intentionally mean to do that, and I do apologize for any inconvenience that that created. So thanks.
Is there any other public comment? If not, is there any other business coming for the Celine City Council? Our next meeting is September 19th. We have a work meeting at 6:30 and a regular meeting at 7:30, and then our following meeting is October 3rd, 7:30. Do we have a motion to adjourn at 10:15?
So moved.
Move, Morrow. We have a second.
Second.
Your boss. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.